Called this meeting to order. Please rise for the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Tonight there will be a vote to enter executive session for the purpose of discussing collective bargaining strategy for units A and B because doing so in public session could negatively impact the bargaining position of the school committee. Following the executive session, we will return to open session to continue with the rest of our agenda. There are no agenda adjustments this evening. Also, the meeting is being videotaped. Are there any public comments tonight? Okay, you have three minutes. And could you please identify yourself?
Hi, I'm Julie Higgins, Marshfield, 81 Maryland Street. So I have a couple things I want to address today. Why haven't the school committee answered any emails? Why haven't the school committee written to Desi to regain local control about the masks? I'm beginning to think the school committee members don't want to hear from parents and their concerns leads me to believe they are not here to work with parents or students. Not once has been talked about how they plan to help these kids by getting the masks off their faces. Every meeting that we've been to, the only thing that's been discussed is money, money grants and funding. It's disgusting. That just makes me feel like it's precedent that money has taken precedent over morals. You know what else is disgusting? CRT. I know masks claims it's not being taught in schools, but my son recently had to take an implicit bias course to play hockey. Why weren't parents notified of this? It makes me irate. Originally, I thought it was me anti-bullying, anti-hazing talk with coaches and players. And then I come to find out that wasn't the case. It was a course they hadn't take. It was about race. It wasn't about, you know, anti-bullying. Does anybody know about this course? Has anybody seen it? Why weren't parents notified of this? I would like a copy of that course that the kids had to take. Did they have to sign the pledge? That MIAA put out? That's all I have to say.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. I'm Toni Borja. I'm an English teacher here at the school. Dear school committee members, I am here today as a representative of the union. We have been negotiating for over a year now and it's been over 100 days without a contract. We are looking to settle the negotiations. The committee recently settled contracts with unit B as well as all of the administrators in the building. We are looking for a fair settlement for unit A. The superintendent is the highest paid superintendent per pupil in the state. I am not here to argue that. He works incredibly hard, but so does everyone else here on this building. This is one of the lowest paid administrative teams on South Shore and the teachers here are one of the lowest of the sending towns. We are one of the lowest paid vocational schools in this state. This is all done under the current design contracts. The school needs to retain and attract the very best educators here. Our students deserve and need that. We need to be financially competitive and that is not what is happening. Twenty years ago, it was rare for staff to leave South Shore. If they did, the teachers came back. However, over the last five years, we've been losing teachers. We have to ask ourselves why are teachers leaving the school? While reasons may vary, we need to do everything we can to put a stop to that. We need to fairly compensate the hardworking teachers that we have in this building and reward them for their extensive effort that they have given in the past years. It's becoming more difficult for our teachers to afford working here and our staff will not be able to support their families if they continue on this trend without reasonable pay. Further, the fear that the school will never be able to attract high-quality staff members if we're the only lowest-paid vocational district. Vocational staff already take a pay cut from working in the industry along with taking educational costs to be licensed by the state to work here. It takes a special type of person to want to shepherd our next generation into the trades. We have to retain those teachers. One manner where we can support these teachers is to financially support them with reasonable salaries. The economy is absolutely crazy out there and the demand for experienced tradesmen is at an all-time high. These talented vocational staff members are worth so much money outside of this building. We need to keep them because of their knowledge in the trade, their certification, their accomplishments and absolutely their professionalism. That's brought into their job. Losing vocational staff impacts their respective programs tremendously and as we are learning, it's getting harder and harder to replace them. We are working in very challenging times. Last year, one is one of the craziest in education, teaching in person, online, getting certified in every computer program out there, bathroom hallway monitoring. And this year isn't faring much better. Staff and students wear winter jackets all day because we have to have our windows open for ventilation. We wear masks all day among the other changes to our routine. Add to this is the burden keeping up students onto the school programs and making sure that they're accomplishing their tasks and learning while they're on quarantine. Students with mental health issues. We're also trying to provide a normal environment through all of this. It has been difficult. This is not anyone's fault, but teaching as we know it has been brutally harder than it ever has been in my 25 years of service. We feel that the offer that is on the table right now from the union members of the negotiation team is fair. It's financially sound package. We do not intend to burden the school financially and with this package, it does not do this. We need to meet the needs of our academic and vocational teachers, our school nurse, our librarian, the guidance counselors who deserve a fair project and raise.
Anyone else? Okay, thank you. We'll take all that you said under advisement. We are trying as a member of the board to make a fair contract and negotiation with it. We've been meeting all the time, trying to make this as fair as we possibly can, but we represent eight communities individually and we have to answer to them. And that puts us in a difficult position and we're trying to do the best we can for both. Thank you. Student advisory.
Hello.
Hi.
I'm Grace. I'm a senior here. I'm in automotive. I don't really have anything too exciting today. We have toys for tots. The deadline is going to be on Monday. We only have about 50 toys, but it's better than zero. We have a food drive. It's till next week. And then you can either send your student in with food or you could drop it off at the office. We actually have a holiday house buildup, which is with Grand Crackers. There's a $10 fee. It all goes to student activities. And the deadline for the fee is actually tomorrow, but the building will be next week on the 22nd, which I believe is Wednesday. Senior privileges. We're still doing the box lunch privilege, which I believe is going well. I haven't heard anything bad. And we actually started leaving during night period study this week, which I know lots of students are extremely excited about that. Today we had a GSA virtual conference. There was a few, me included, who did just a virtual conference on self-care and community care. Skills USA, students are starting to prepare for districts, which is on March 4th. Skills USA is hosting a comedy night on January 15th at the Venus and Hanson. And they had a very successful holiday party this past weekend serving over 25 days. Some future stuff. We're looking to do a polar punch and we're also going to do a locket, but those are still more for January, February. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, next on the agenda, I'd ask for a motion to approve the set of minutes listed on the agenda. Situative?
Second.
Second by Whitman. Any discussion on the minutes? Seeing none, all in favor?
I'd stay bucked if I wouldn't hear.
Okay. Anyone opposed? None. Motion carries. Reports, treasurer, Jim.
Thank you, Mr. Haywood. In your package, you have a treasure report for this month. We have the cover page has pictures of the Christmas trees and wreaths and cable ornaments that are being done by the agriculture department, which has been selling outside at a quick clip. Page two is our financial position, our cash balances. Currently, through all of our savings accounts and stabilization funds and other grants and trust funds, we have a total of about $7.6 million. Our OPEB account currently has $840,000. Again, we add to that every year and that is for future benefit costs that we may incur, that we will incur, but saved for the future. Page three is our revenues for the month. As you know, we did our November 1 billing to our member towns. We collected $1.2 million from all of our member towns during the course of November. The two towns that did not pay during November were Hanson and Whitman, but they didn't surely pay there in December. So we're all square with all of our member towns. We also did the billing for our non-member towns as well and we're in good shape with all of them as well. The other revenues that come in, a little bit of earnings on the investments in our monthly chapter 70 billing of $371,000. So overall, the revenue for the month is $1,627,000. The expenses, again for the month, a little over $1 million. $700,000 of that is salaries for the staff. Everything else is pretty ordinary. Maintenance of the buildings, health insurances, books and supplies, shop equipment. We did a lot of software license renewals this month as well. So overall, planning is as planned. The spending is as planned and everything's going around smoothly. So overall, in good shape financially. And that's it.
Thank you, Jim. Motion to accept the treasure report?
Motion.
Second, Bob. Bob, Rockland and Abington. Any discussion on the treasure report? All in favor? Opposed? Seeing none, motion carries. Budget transfers.
We do have a couple budget transfers. We have requested to increase our technology budget by $30,000. Again, there's a lot more Chromebooks that have been placed in the system that weren't over budgeted as well as license renewals for $10,000. Again, with the pandemic and reaching out to a lot more software vendors, we have a lot more licenses to pay. So total of $40,000. Transfers and their requests that come out of the health insurance, which is we've identified some savings on the health insurance line.
Okay, thank you. Motion to accept the budget? Whitman? Co-Hassett, second. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor? Opposed? Motion carries. Nancy Heskey?
Yeah, I'll say.
I'll say. Okay. Recognition of the facilities director, Robert Morehead. Bob, I want to thank you personally for all your hard work. You were one of the best steals we ever made from the town of Hanover. You've saved so much money. You've done so much for the school. I don't even know where to begin. But thank you from the bottom of my heart for all you've done. I definitely appreciate it and I know the rest of the committee does. And more than one, Robert.
Mr. Chairman, I just want to add extra.
Oh, sure.
Bob, would you come up? We all love Bob. Sometimes a little afraid of him, depending on what we want to ask him for, but this gentleman here has delivered on everything we've wanted. This is an older school. We know that story. But everybody who's walked in this building for the last 17 years to a person has remarked at how great this place looks. It has become the standard thanks to Bob Morehead. So on behalf of the entire school, Bob, I want to thank you for all that you've done and please accept this specialty gift as a token of our appreciation.
Sorry we couldn't wrap it any better, Bob. It's the holiday season.
Do you need some help in that?
Should feel familiar.
I just got to find somebody to teach you how to play.
Oh, yeah. Goes with your band.
From our friends in metal temperation and welding. I think this is the pick. Thank you, Bob.
Thank you.
Want to play?
Come on. Hit the band. It's going to be true.
Needs a little chicken.
Twinkens. Personally, I would like to thank everybody in this room. First, for giving me the opportunity, what I think is the best job I could have ever asked for in this trade. For the trust you've all put in me, the support that everyone has given me over the years. We recreated a whole new department. There's nothing that my department ever want without in order to do our job. And I mean, it's not up to one person. It's up to everybody. And you folks have all made that job possible. Jim has started this week. He's going to be a good guy. He's very knowledgeable and I can only hope that you guys give the same trust to him and the same support to him that you have given to me because it wasn't just me. It was everybody in this room who's made everything that's happened over the last 17 years possible. And I can't thank you enough. I really, really appreciate it. Thank you.
When you turn it? Mr. Chairman, I think is the budget presentation the next item?
Nothing from the subcommittees tonight, so you're on.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Members of the committee, we have reached December. Each December, I bring you an initial budget presentation for the upcoming fiscal year. I'll walk through some of the slides here. We'll have this available on the website. And at the end of the presentation, we get into the timelines of where we go with the budget process. Try this one. The one that says polymer. There we go.
Of course it works.
Of course it does. Charge of the batteries. We'll talk about some recent accomplishments and goals, the overall building process, some of the headliners that are contained in this particular budget. And as always, we spend some time, even though January is the month that we talk about the numbers, the state assessment numbers, we will talk about the process involving assessments, the impact with enrollment. And then I'll talk about the MSBA, our statement of interest and also our local construction project and where things stand right now as we head into the second half of the year. And I'll end by going over the timeline that takes us through the winter. The goals looking forward, they generally fall into these categories as we continue to work through this pandemic. The state has not alleviated districts of accountability measures, so we will continue to focus our attention on at-risk students, which under these circumstances, we define pretty much everybody in that category. But the state continues to define certain subgroups and how they do on MCAS. And our academic departments always target these students with interventions that help them to be successful. Also, next year is what NEAS would call a self-study year as they will, because of COVID, they've delayed this a little bit, but they'll be visiting us for a decennial visit in the 2324 school year. So that is something that we'll attend to next school year. The beginning process. Fortunately, they have converted the process all online, streamlined their standards. And for anyone who's been through NEAS accreditation, it has been a rather onerous process, but they've done a good job about streamlining it. We'll continue to work on expanded social emotional learning initiatives, expanded workforce development training after hours. You probably see in the media that there is a lot of talk and a lot of funding. Vocational schools certainly should be the recipients of these funds so that we can keep our lights on after school and continue to educate people in our community beyond our high school population. And we'll be focusing on improving ways that we can enhance our English learner admissions outreach. Students in middle schools in our sending towns whose first language is not English have barriers to learning about South Shore. We have some grant funding that's going to help us partner with some of our communities to improve those connections so all families are well-informed about us. And in terms of facilities, we have a master plan that we've been working on trying to tackle some small and medium-range projects. We have an application into MSBA, which I'll talk about a little bit in some more detail. And we're very interested to see how the state will administer the $100 million that was in the most recent ARPA budget for vocational schools. I'm certainly interested as they develop program guidelines because I think we'd be an ideal candidate for some of those funds. Those funds that I just mentioned are not MSBA funds. It's a separate infusion of money targeting vocational schools or schools that have vocational programs. The accomplishments, the first one is obvious. The teaching that takes place during a pandemic. Everything that is normal is turned upside down. And many folks who are here tonight can speak to that every single day. And yet, even though we are in person and that is a blessing, there are special challenges for this school year when it comes to teaching and learning. Yet I think the kids are thriving under some pretty difficult circumstances thanks to our staff. We've got a robust co-op program. The numbers of students out, retained with employers, staying out there, the amount of support we're able to give students, the encouragement to go on co-op has been phenomenal and it is a signature part of what our school is all about. We have secured some competitive grants, which are big-time game changers. It makes my job a little bit easier when we look at vocational capital because we have been successful in writing and competing for grant funds for skills capital grants, Mas Life Science and Career Tech Institute grants. This CTI, that acronym's going to get a lot of play in the near future. You may have even heard about it. There's a lot of money coming in this next supplemental budget for schools who will be running technical institute coursework after school. We are in the pipeline for curriculum development, what they're calling Phase One. And potentially, we will be able to offer up to courses in up to four of our programs. It doesn't involve licensed teachers necessarily. It addresses an audience outside of the high school population, but it does in fact provide us with resources to keep the equipment in the programs current. We've established what we're calling a bridge program, a concrete support network for students who struggle with transition coming back to school, perhaps because of a hospitalization stay or for other reasons. This is key. This will be key when we have COVID in the rearview mirror. And having this program identified, having it administered, having staff available and space available has proven to be very valuable for students who are vulnerable and trying to get back to whatever normal looks like. Anyone who spends several days out of their normal routine suffers and this program has been very helpful for those students. The number of students interested in playing sports at South Shore has reached its highest numbers. And later on in the presentation, there's some additional funding sought for additional coaching. We want students involved after 2:30 and they are stepping up. They're finding great joy and success and fulfillment in our sports and extracurricular activities. And as you know, last spring, we got approval from all eight of our communities at individual town meetings for a debt authorization, which gives us some capacity to borrow to address some of the capital needs, facility needs that we can't either wait for MSBA or that we couldn't normally fit into an annual budget cycle. A lot to be grateful for. A lot of people made these bullet points become a reality. Our budget building process, you hear me say this every year. It's a zero-based budget process. We ask all of our department heads and cost center supervisors to build a budget from zero. They do that in the early fall. The requests get prioritized. We take special note of capital needs, technology needs so that we can continue to bring budgets that don't come with many surprises internally. And with a good long-range capital matrix, we're able to balance out and target when certain programs have access to capital funding. The competitive grants, I can't say that enough. If we didn't secure these competitive grants, these vocational equipment items would be coming through the capital line in the budget. So it is a direct impact. To have skills capital grants continue to be funded by the legislature is absolutely essential for schools like ours. So this page is the busiest of all the slides. It probably contains the most information. I'll slow walk this one. The overall budget proposal, which we'll bring to you in a little more detail next month, is about 1.81% higher than last year. Our enrollment has shifted. We have 11 students. We're up 11 students from last year. And that 11, because of the fluctuation, I'll just, it's on another slide. And that 11, because of the fluctuation, I'll just, it's on another slide. So we clocked in 655 students. And if you go back a few years, the high-water mark for enrollment was 650. So it's five more than what we would have previously said as our highest number. But the shift here for this year is a, it's a continuation of last year where we have fewer non-resident students and more in-district students. And that has to do with increased demand from within the district and some changes in regulations regarding access to schools from outside of the district. And we've talked about this over the years, that we happen to be a school located geographically in an area where there are several communities that are not aligned with the vocational school. So I would predict that when we graduate the class of 2022, there are approximately 24 non-resident students in that graduating class. I would anticipate coming back to you in a year with a similar, a similar story. It's not a bad story. It's, it's just the reality of the demand outstripping the capacity and the shift back to a school that will probably be nearly all in-district students within two years. The financial headliners in this budget, under capital and debt, there is money for stabilization, $150,000, that we would be setting aside for any renovation and construction costs. The overall capital line is much lower, which we, that was part of our forecast. If we secured the debt authorization, we would not need to go and seek as much capital dollars because we've got, we've got that debt authorization access. There's also funding here for our bus fleet. We have enjoyed a very good arrangement with our five-year lease on propane buses. We'll be entering our fifth calendar year, and in fiscal, in fiscal '24, we'll be working on a strategy about going out for a successor lease. We may come to you with a recommendation that says the buses are in very good shape at five years and maybe extend that out a year further. But this, this funding here will help offset when we do return to an annual lease payment. We paid off the bus lease. And so over time, it's like when you finish paying off your car and you enjoy the increased monthly income, knowing that at some point, the car payments are going to return. So this helps to offset the spike that would come in a few years. We have three diesel buses that are, that are older, and the intention five years ago was we would have these three diesel buses last us through the lease. And we may go out with a smaller procurement to purchase three, three buses to replace those diesels. There's funding here sought for, to replace the dump truck that we have in our maintenance department. The debt service line went from a lot of money to no money, and now the debt service line reflects what we had told our communities. There's $70,000 that would be split up amongst our communities, and it's based on our projection that if we did construct a building, a modest 9,000-square-foot addition, and replace this roof, we would borrow about $7 million. And we would pay interest only for two years. So the debt service line is there for that reason. It's contingent on a couple of things. The priorities are the roof and the addition, but the last line I would just want to dwell on here that says, "MSBA decision could influence next steps." The intention of the MSBA was to make a decision on who they were going to invite for the next round of their core program. They typically do it in December. They delayed making a decision until their next board meeting. So my recommendation for now is going to be that we sit tight just a little longer. We've had seven of these conversations, all ending with, "Sorry, you're not invited." Would the additional funding at the state level make an impact? I'm not sure. But I do think, and we said this to our communities when we went looking for the debt authorization, that if we were invited into the MSBA pipeline, that that opportunity has to take precedence over some smaller construction projects until we know through a feasibility study what would happen. As you probably have seen in your own communities, a town gets invited into MSBA, they have to show within 270 days that they've got the support of the local community. We already have funding available for that feasibility study. That's really the first test for MSBA. Will the community support studying what is the best option? So a feasibility study, you end up with this very, very in-depth document that says, "Here are the different ways you can address your school's needs." And they usually fall somewhere between minor renovation and demo to a full new school. I mean, we informally have said over the years, we don't need a new school, but a feasibility study is what MSBA requires. So they can study the, they can study it and then come back with a proposal for what they would be willing to fund. But the messaging to MSBA is, "We're ready. We've got the funding. Now just give us the opportunity to start the process." We will know more. My hope would be we would know more just prior to their March 2nd board meeting. The budget contains requested funding for additional personnel. With the support of federal grants, we have been able to bring more resources and supports into this building. That has been helpful. Like with any grant program, there is a certain shelf life. It doesn't last forever. And it certainly has drawn my attention that there are some interventions and resources we brought into this building that should stay after this funding is over, after this pandemic is in the rearview mirror. Additional supports for building substitutes and paraprofessionals. Additional supports, I have a part-time custodial position. I want to add some hours to that position. Funding for the cafeteria. The folks in the cafeteria have historically relied on our revolving fund for labor costs. As you know, with what has happened with food service, I'm looking for at least a one-year infusion of some additional funds to help offset that account. With the anticipation, let's hope that next year, things will be back to normal. Revenue streams will return to normal. There's funding in here for coaching. There's funding in here to take two existing paraprofessional positions in two programs, our horticulture and electrical programs, coupled with fiscal '23 budget money and a strategic use of our Perkins Grant, will position these two programs for fiscal '23 to be able to expand the teaching ranks, which will allow them to expand the curriculum and improve the student-teacher ratios in the programs. And there's also funding in this budget for what I'm listing as a part-time social worker. Having a social worker as part of our school community through our, through the ESAR funding we have has been instrumental. And they will be funding for that position through these ESAR grants. But I want to start to build a commitment to these positions now, again, so that when this funding isn't there, there isn't a big spike in, in personnel requests. But along with our counseling staff and our adjustment counselors and our student services team, this is an integral part of what we need to support students. When we go to our towns, we also want to point out, as there are comparisons made with K-12 districts and regionals, we, we do point out that around 16%, the number varies, but around 16% of our budget includes costs, because we're kind of a once, we're one-stop shopping. We're an entity unto ourselves. So we have to include in our budget costs such as insurance and retirement and OPEB and payroll taxes, which in a K-12 district, these expenses exist on the town side of the ledger. But we have to embed it all in one location. And as I mentioned a couple of times on this, on this slide, there is ESAR funding that we've received that is going to help us with a lot of these initiatives, softening the blow, letting us take on, letting us bring in necessary resources to do the job during this difficult time. I do want to, I do want to talk about this a little bit regarding grants. So just to walk through what we've received, where we're headed. We got grant money in three rounds, ESAR 1, 2, and 3. The first round runs through the end of this school year, and the focus is on Chromebooks and PPE. We will remain a one-to-one school. We will always have a Chromebook for every student. And so we need to meet that commitment by making sure there's adequate funding for those devices. ESAR 2, the second bag of money that we applied for and received is, was more money, and we're using it for some of the resources I mentioned, additional substitutes, cafeteria monitors, funding the social worker, plus some funds, which they allow schools to target funds for capital projects. So part of the window project that we've had to delay because of supply chain issues, we'll pick that back up in the spring. ESAR 3, the largest of the three grants, is not yet approved. They're, they're taking a little bit longer, but that's okay. These funds we can utilize through fiscal '24. So we have a lot of flexibility to, to meet the needs short-term. I see it as short-term. But life after fiscal '24 is, is really where I would also want to look. What is it that's working? Where can we use these funds? But make no mistake about it, these, these funds have been very, very helpful. And we have other annual entitlement grants that we use to fund personnel and supplies and professional development. Now here are a few number slides about enrollment. I said earlier about the shift of enrollment. So when we go to our communities and we talk about how enrollment can impact assessments, you can see that nearly all of our communities have a one-year upswing in their enrollment And this also speaks to something I said a little earlier in terms of enrollment trends. If you draw your attention to the lighter green down here, you see this, I guess, kind of a bell curve or so. That's the non-resident number. Okay? And as each year continues, that light green amount will drop. And the darker green, which is our in-district number, will increase. So I would anticipate being here a year from now saying, maybe the enrollment is about the same for capacity reasons, but there'll be more of the dark green number, and that number will probably be closer to 30. And then a year later, the number would, might be under 10 as that shift continues. From a financial point of view, the reason this number matters from a budgeting perspective is budgets have to be built on revenue. Are we get, where are we getting the revenue from? And when Jim crunches the numbers on January 26th, after the governor's budget comes out, we'll get a first sense of what our Chapter 70 aid will be. What we want is, we want, if we have more in-district students, there's a bigger foundation budget, and we want more state aid. But there's no guarantee that that's going to happen. So when we plan this budget, we've got to consider if there is going to be a known drop in revenue, we have to be able to account for it. And to some extent, dropping slightly from 97 to 83, that was part of last year's story as well. The drop is a little bit more. Now, we will get additional Chapter 78, I have no doubt, but we won't really know until late January what that will be. The next couple of slides, again, unpack what goes into a town's assessment. The categories are the same as we've talked about over the years. The biggest one is the one we don't learn about until very late in the process. It's about 70% of a town's assessment, the minimum local contribution. This is the number that we wait for from the state. It's not something that we can reliably calculate on our own. It involves getting value, getting valuation numbers for real estate and income in all of our communities. These other items are tied into our regional agreement. We fund for capital on a three-year rolling average. We fund for operating costs, of which transportation is an important chunk. What does it, what does it take to run the school? What are the costs above the, above the minimum? And that gets apportioned by, by student population. So this 70% amount is the town's ability to pay. Well, if your towns have a higher expectation, less affluent towns would probably attract more state aid. But when you get to these categories here, it's not about the town's ability to pay. It's about the number of students in the building, the number of students who have been in the building for a three-year rolling average. Or in the case of debt, it's based on a fixed three-year number preceding the debt authorization. Not very interesting stuff, but it's important for our towns to know that when we do bring them an assessment number, there is a way of walking, of walking back and figuring out how we arrived at the number. Good news here, every regional school in the state would love to say that regional transportation would be 100%, but it appears as though it's going to be a safe bet for us to estimate 85%, which is the highest reimbursement rate we've seen, incentivizing regionalization and helping to save on transportation costs. When we come back in January, this very busy chart will be filled in. These are the same categories I mentioned. Minimum local contribution. It's going to be higher. We have more in-district students. The non-resident tuition offset, those are the numbers that Jim will put in parentheses, showing how those numbers, we collect the, the tuition in the previous year, and we use it to offset the following year's budget. Those numbers will be lower because of the drop in enrollment. We're projecting 85% on regional transport. That will be a key ingredient to help in that category called operating costs above the minimum. The debt amount will be $70,000 divided by the towns. The capital line is about $485,000 lower than last year, also divided by the regional agreement. And then we'll be able to show our communities and you all, a one-year lookback on assessment numbers to compare what drove the assessment numbers for that last year. I'll include a few slides here. Again, I know you all have seen these before, but it is a good reminder that for seven years, we have said to the MSBA, "We're the second-oldest vocational school in the state. We are well-maintained. That should not be held against us, and we need to modernize, but we can't do it without your help." And so we point out to them in our statement of interest with some minor modifications. We have needs largely due to oversubscription, but in also an aging building. We have a 20-year-old modular unit. We have several shops that don't have enough space. We have an inadequate weight room, and the list goes on and on. Never mind the guts of the building. These are the things that Bob Moorhead would be working on with me every year. Bob, what's changed in the last year? This got older. I can't get parts for this. This thing broke. We add that to our story, and we tell MSB every year what we need. Again, this is just another slide. There's the modular, lovely modular unit, circa 2,000. How long is a modular unit supposed to last? These are the stories we're telling. We're seeking support. So in 2018, we commissioned a facilities master plan study to give a full physical to our 1962, 1978, 1992 addition, surrounding grounds, and it helped identify and prioritize and legitimize the concerns we've been raising. And most recently, with the debt authorization approval, we've begun to focus some energy on, okay, what's our play? What's the one thing we could do that would be, have the most impact with the limited debt authorization funds we have? So I'm going to show you a few slides that might involve a modest addition here in the front of the building. That is not, again, an MSBA project. That is the potential for adding this. We went to our engineers and said, "We've got about $4 million out of the 11 and a half that we budgeted, that we sought from our communities, that we can devote to new construction. The rest really is identified as maintenance and upkeep." So they are working initially on the idea of a freestanding building in the center here between the salon and our main office. The reason it's a freestanding building is because of, for code reasons, if we connect this building even slightly to the, to the main building, it'll trigger estimated $3 million cost for sprinkling and sealing work. And so that's the kind of work that we would prefer right now on a budget to have MSBA cover some of the tab for. That, that bird's-eye view looks a little bit better with this picture here. That's what that space would look like. And the reason that this space strategically placed here is also a game changer. This is a schematic. 9,000 square feet would give us enough space to have at least two comparable footprints. One footprint, in my opinion, very likely could be a new location for our graphic arts, our graphic design, visual communications program. That program was placed in its current location when the addition was built in the early 90s, when the industry was focused on printing presses. They needed high ceilings, and now we know that that industry has changed. And so the strategy here, if we were to move forward with this, is that by creating a little bit of targeted space here, it would then allow a ripple effect for us to expand existing programs where we're turning students away, where the students need more space because of the curriculum they're working on. And some of those programs would include combining our two automotive footprints into one, giving our HVAC program more space, and there were a few others in this 1992 win. This multipurpose space over here hasn't totally been defined yet, but that space could serve, I can, believe me, I have a list longer than what we could put in there. But one non-vocational example would be that we could carve up this space into two properly, properly-sized science labs, where MSBA's current standards on science labs far exceed what we have been able to work with, and our folks do a great job, and some pretty tight quarters to deliver laboratory experiences. So this here is a schematic for right now, but they're costing it out, and we're going to have, we're going to have folks from the engineering team here to take a look at the existing footprint. Because with this work, there's also the renovation work that would come with our existing programs, taking down a wall, needing to change utilities, et cetera. In a perfect world, at our most aggressive, we could start this work this summer, have an outside contractor, construct the shell, and then spend a year having our students and, and our construction programs work on the inside. But the MSBA's decision really should influence that, and we just have to wait a little bit longer. So that timeline may be, may be too aggressive. But like, like with the master facilities plan, when you have the plan, whether it's long-range capital, master facilities plan, it doesn't matter. And when you have a plan, you can be more nimble to make a decision when the time comes. So that's, that's the current work of our capital project subcommittee and our engineering firm and our project manager. Last slide. Wait for applause. Okay. The next steps for the budget process. On January 26th, we have a public hearing on the budget. Earlier that day, we, Jim, Jim goes to his computer or his phone, and he hits the refresh button like he's waiting for tickets or something. He waits to see the governor's budget drop. And with that, he goes to the section of the budget that talks about Chapter 70 funding. Because with that number proposed by the governor, with the hopes that historically the legislature might increase it, and generally it would not be lower, so we use a conservative number from the governor. And that's what we've brought you the last several years. With that piece of the puzzle, we can go back to those busier slides and project town assessments. That will be the focus of our January meeting. By, by regional agreement, we've got to certify a budget 45 days before the earliest town meeting. And we've got some ambitious towns here looking to have early April. Situated historically in April. Abington is hoping to have their town meeting in April. Norwell, at the time of putting this together, hasn't, hasn't set a date yet. But our, our general process is, we certify in February. Our towns invite us to their advisory or finance committee meetings through March, and then we begin, and then we begin to bring our budget assessments to our respective towns for, for town meeting. So the next step would be closer refinement, budget assessment numbers at our January meeting. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
All are welcome. Any questions for the board? I think none. That's all you got?
Yes, and I will turn it over now to our administrator reports.
Thank you.
Thank you both. As Mr. Hickey said, you know, we ebb and flow in this place, so it's December. So he's talking about budgets, and I'm talking about ninth-grade placement. So our ninth graders have gone through 10 out of the 12 programs. They're going to see all 12 programs. We like this model, we've had it for a couple of years now. They spend about two and a half days, it depends on the weather and things like that. But they spend anywhere from two and a half to three days in every program. It is a, it's enlightening for many of them, as many of them change. As I talk to parents, they're changing their ideas. I was going to come in and be a carpenter, and now I'm going to be in CIT, or whatever it is. It's, it's a great thing. So they'll finish up their last two shops next week. This is in part because of the windstorm we had in the beginning of the year that really messed up our cycles. So that's what's going to happen. The students are graded in four categories in every shop. So that's safety, performance, work habits, and teamwork or collaboration, or as I like to say, do they play well in the sandbox together? So they're all measured in that. Their 3.25 is the best they can get in each category, a total of 13. And if the NC in 12 programs, if I ask math works out, it's 156 points is the best they can get. And what we do is we rank order them, 1 through 168. That's how many freshmen are in the building, 1 through 168. Beginning on December 23rd, we will give students and parents the ability to go in to power schools and choose their order of preference in shops. So if they want carpentry, and then Hy-Vac, and then my next one is electrical, whatever it may be, they'll go in, they have the whole vacation week to do that. We want to make sure that the parents are involved in this process, making sure that if they're choosing the right shop, these students are choosing the right shop for the correct reasons. So really, input for the family is very, very important in this process. When we come back to school on June, uh, June, oh, sorry. On January 3rd and 4th, we'll go through the ranked order. So we'll take those 1 through 168, and number one will get their first choice. Number two will get their choice. And when we end up with a shop that is full, and the next student wants it, they'll go onto the waitlist, and they'll get their second choice. And we'll work through all 168 that way. We are hoping to have these done by Wednesday, the 5th. So we would have all the students come down, we'd do a little ceremony, we'd take pictures, we congratulate them. As they're getting placed in the shop, they're going to spend the next three and a half years in. On that same day, we're also going to have them go to the shop in the afternoon for the last 15 minutes, so they can see who else is in their shop. That is one of the things they do at lunches and in all the academic classes. What shop are you in? What shop are you in? We're going to try and take the mystery out of that for them, and give them 15 minutes in the shop at the end of the day to be able to do that, okay? On January 10th, the students will start in their shop. So that's the second Monday when we come back. Anybody have any questions about this process and how we do it? Nope?
Sounds good.
Okay, I'll leave you with one comment, I need to, I need to do this. Please, every single one of you, over the next couple of weeks, give yourself the greatest gift, the gift of time, okay? Relax, rest, and recharge. Grace said it so well, self-care is very, very important, okay? Your mental and physical health is important. I wish every single one of you a stronger and healthier 2022. Thank you.
Good evening, School Committee. Superintendent Hickey, community members, parents, valued educators. It's really wonderful to see all of you here. I know many of you here are here for rather complex issues, but seeing you all here shows, and really reveals your dedication to, to our or your students. So, thank you. I'm here under, I feel a little frivolous with my topics tonight, but there, I have my, my content under two topics, Mary and Bright. So under Mary, we are merry that our co-curriculum organization of the Regional Skills Organization had the Skills USA dinner, excuse me, Skills USA Holiday Party on Saturday. And as you know, I like to name the names. So Cole Hodley, Lisa Bell, Tony Paul Bell, Charles Duzette, Tom Hart, Bob Mallon, and Katie Berry were present at that event to support the regional events supporting families in the across the area. Grace does not speak to the strength of herself and the student council. She has done an excellent job representing the student body this year, and has faced challenging issues as seniors and upperclassmen return to school and negotiate the return to normalcy. She's done that with poise and grace. And I'd like to give a nod to Matt Filano, who's done excellent job, Brian Viger in the student council with a very active student population. They are actually pretty busy, doing lots of things, including chasing the elf around the school for Chuck the Mars. This is a ancillary to some of the commentary that Tom made in the budget. We have 139 hundred athletes and over 80 students involved in our extracurricular activities. That's a third of our student population here beyond the 2:30 bell. And many of the folks you see here are supporting those organizations. Our FFA, our Future Farmers of America, came in first place in the turf management competition. This was fantastic news for our very young program. So congrats, go out to Tom Hart and Kathy Johnson for their hard work with their students there. Under finishing up, I want to celebrate the fact that Solonby is finally open to the public. Thank you so much to Bob and his crew for getting that place open. And it looks fantastic, and I know that everybody is really delighted, including the community, that the doors are open. 100% of our electrical seniors are currently out on co-op. And I'd like to celebrate the electrical department, Todd Homeliner, Eddie Carl, and Dan Condon, and certainly a nod to Keith Boyle for doing such a great job getting, making co-op the showcase piece that should be for our school. So thank you. And under the idea of Bright, this is really a nod to the future. We have, our MCAS interventions are in place. So supporting teachers, many of them right here in the room, will be putting in a lot of extra effort in the coming months to make sure that our students who are participating in retakes for MCAS or who need early interventions to be successful on their, their spring tests, those are all in place through boot camps or a school day or after-school class supports. Our bridge program that Tom, that Mr. Hickey mentioned earlier is fully functioning, supporting many students who are returning to school after long absences, who need a little bit of extra help to get things just right. So that's a very successful program, supported by, I'd say both of those are led by Katie Berry, our Director of Special Ed, specifically Angela Cheerly is our counselor in charge of the bridge program. And finally, our GSA is finding their footing and to become student leaders and spent the day today, as Grace mentioned, at a virtual conference hosted by Assetbad Valley. And they have come away with a pretty strong toolkit of resources that they can use to become building leaders to support any, any biases that we might see. They're learning how to face those challenges, so that is also very great. In January, we go back to some of the old things that we did before COVID. And we're looking forward to bringing a department here every single month to celebrate their success. Totally looking forward to introducing you to the new Hy-Vac staff in January. See you then.
Thank you, Sandy.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
New business surplus request. The next item is a surplus request, ask for a motion to declare surplus, the item listed. Situates, Noel, any discussion on the item? Seeing none, all in favor? Anyone oppose? Motion carries. Lawrence?
Excuse me, Mr. Chairman, I apologize. Not sure with Robert's rules, is this a point of order? But on my own half, I didn't quite follow the agenda that was being presented. And I would like to make a quick three-point presentation as both a resident of Norwell and also as a retired social volunteer employee. If I may, three points, just very quickly, if I may. I think I need permission for that.
Yeah, you do. And we had the public comments at the beginning of the evening at 4:00. And so we're past that point in our agenda.
Does that mean no?
That basically is a no. You're more than welcome next month. Get here, and we'll gladly listen to anything you have to say.
So, so the area for public comments from the community only happens at the beginning of the meeting?
Correct, sir.
Thank you very much.
You're more than welcome, sir. Lawrence, you try it again.
Lawrence, 10, 10A, 11, 11A, and 12 totaling $1,418,346.97.
Second by? Whitman, any discussion on the warrants? Seeing none, all in favor? Anyone oppose? Motion carries. Is there a request for action? Anyone? No. Motion to go into executive session. So moved by Situates, second by Go-Hassan.
Roll call?
Roll call vote, stop with Whitman.
Yes.
Noel. Go-Hassan.
Yes.
Hannover, yes. Noel.
Hanson, yes.
Hanson. You're working, Noel, I'm sorry. Situates, yes. Rockland?
Yes.
Abington? Okay, anyone oppose? The motion carries, we're now on the executive side. We're now back in open session. As soon as she's ready, we'll take care of this last.
We are ready to go, we are live.
We are live. Next item on the agenda is the Unit B motion, MOA amendment. Thank you. I ask for a motion to accept this amendment. Motion made by?
Bob Moore. Noel.
I'll second it.
Second. Any discussion on that?
I'm reading the motion though, I want to add without precedence.
I think if we just read that, Mr. Chairman, will you just say to accept the amendment without precedence?
I ask for a motion to accept this amendment.
Without?
Without precedence. Okay.
Yes.
Yeah, we're there now.
Yes.
Okay, so now we'll do a roll call.
If we could just do a voice roll.
Voice.
Second, we're going to do a second.
I'll second it.
Seconded, okay. There we go. I'll get to something. Any discussion? All in favor? Anybody oppose? Seeing none, motion carries. Motion to adjourn.
Our motion, Whitman, with all due respect, second.
Way down there, huh, buddy?
I'm still waiting.
All in favor? Anyone oppose? If you do, I'm throwing a scalpel. Motion carries.